All right, seeing that we have six o'clock and I call order the Village of Belleville Board of Trustees for Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty five.
Let's take this to the way of the United States of America. And these will be public, which it stands one nation under God, in this world, with liberty and justice.
It's all ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, Ben Davis.
Here.
Uh, Chucky Baven.
Here.
Ebon Guard.
Here.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Kazmar.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Seigler.
Here.
You have a quorum.
What's the meeting posted?
Meeting was posted as required by law.
All right, participation. So do we have anyone checking in?
Uh, Judy's up first tonight. Um. Yeah, I'll get you on there, Connie, thanks.
Try to make this as brief as possible, and I've only got two things. The first one is every same survey I've taken here in the village. First question always deals with, am I a resident or non-resident? When I look at that question, I'm going. That has a smell of discrimination. If you're not a resident, even though you're a taxpayer, you get treated differently than if you are a resident. And we never used to do this prior years. Until maybe twenty twenty. So we've been going on five years where we have to say whether we're a resident or non-resident. So just an FYI. Fortunately, in the surveys online, you got to answer the question. So just want you to know. Might be something that somebody will take up. The second thing has to do with closed sessions. I went through the statutes. Statute number nineteen eighty-five talks about the exemptions of a closed session. I'm only going to read you a part of it. No motion to convene in a closed session may be adopted unless the chief presiding officer announces to those present at the meeting at which such motion is made. The nature of the business to be considered at such closed sessions and the specific exemption or exemptions under this subsection by which such closed sessions claimed to be on. We have the three items after the evaluation of our administrator, of which the Belleville watchdog sent information to a number of us. Let us know that in the past three years, the office of the administrator wages and benefits increased eighty-four percent. That the finance department or yeah. So I'll leave it at. In the last three years, wages and benefits exceeded ninety-one percent. That's a lot of money. So just something to know. There are A through H exemptions. Negotiating positions of the village depot property. Number of months ago, uh, with Jim Larson, Jeff Larson was still the village president, read a document that he prepared explaining why individuals that were nominated to obtain the village property or the rest of the individuals that wanted to purchase that property. And it was shortly after that that the public, residents and other taxpayers, uh, found out what that property was sold for. So I have a problem with this negotiating. And the exemptions, this does not follow any of the exemptions listed under statute number nineteen eighty-five. Some chapter one E can be invoked to prevent disclosure of negotiation strategy or other inside information that is not available to one party in a negotiation. Some one E cannot, however, be invoked merely because a private entity desires confidentiality because the public will later have the opportunity to provide input or prevent competition when the other side remains free to negotiate with potential competitors. All enough.
Okay, Judy, you've had your three minutes. Bring it up again at next meeting or during one of the items.
Mary Jean. Hi, Mary Jean. I live on one one six East Avenue. My questions, I have a question. The PTO that's going to take effect January first, what happens to the accumulated sick leave that several employees of the village have earned? Are they going to lose it? I was told in February that there was going to be a plan about the sick leave that was already earned for some employees. I have not heard what that plan is. And there's probably five people that I can think of off the top of my head that this affects, plus two police officers, and I'm sure they're going to negotiate their contract to keep their sick time. But it would be really sad if we just threw that sick leave that they had earned away without giving them something or carrying it over or putting it in. I don't think that's very nice to do that to people. Second, I get the Midwest Living magazine. Beautiful ad, I want to call it the Green County Chamber. Did you see it?
No, but I don't.
It listed all the Green County festivals, let's put it that way. Bellev wasn't in there, and it goes from like June first all the way to September first. And in fact, in fact, Riddler's, I think, was even in more of September in there. And I thought, what a great place. Why wasn't Bellev put in there? We still have a member on that board, don't we, that we represent, that we go to?
We have membership in G C D C, Green County Development Corporation, but I don't think, they're not the ones who put that together.
But that would have been really nice to see that in. That would have been a big advertisement, but I don't know how you reach out to them for next year.
Of Midwest.
It was Midwest Living, and I have the darn ad in my house. I thought I had in my car. I was going to run and bring it in. Show you guys, because it's really a pretty nice ad.
Send that to me.
But PTO sick time, I'm really concerned. These long-term employees, what are we going to do for them? And I was told in February there was going to be a plan, and I have a plan. Thank you.
It's communicated.
Yes.
Bonnie, I have this time. Okay. Well, that's all on my list.
Consent agenda. All items of consent agenda are considered routine will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless board member requests it. In which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. We have minutes from July seventh, July ninth, July twenty-first. The check register for July twenty twenty-five. The special event light up the darkness and next community's yearly agreement.
To approve the consent agenda, send it.
Shelley, second bid, was it Maxine?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
And opposed? President's report, do not have anything for tonight. Staff reports.
I have just a couple of things. Most of it's in the memo. Um, but I will point out again that in Kristin's Steve voting begins tomorrow and goes through Friday, the fifteenth hours are pretty much standard due. Lodge Hall hours. Um. The Board of Review is set still for August twenty-sixth. Open book is completed, but if people, there was a little bit of snafu with uh, the open book. So the assessor has promised me that anybody in the village, any resident that still has any questions and wants to talk to the assessor about their property assessment can reach out. We could give them her information, and she'll reach out directly, and everybody will be covered that needs to be so. Um, that, and then um, I will introduce Broderick. And a product, this is our youth apprentice for the year. His name is Broderick. And he's uh, working not only um, with my department, but also with police. Um, and we're excited about having him this year, and he's doing a great job.
Great.
Well, so.
So thank you all.
I want to hear your name. And that's all I got.
Right, and I have number nine, discuss, consider Carolina.
I wanted to introduce someone too. I was just waiting.
Yes, jumping the gun here, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. This is our newest library employee, Jasmine Marcel. Marcellus, I'm so sorry. Feel free to come by and say hello. She just started today. I think the villagers know.
Wow.
Tardis stress.
Yes, tardis stress.
Okay, sorry that I missed anybody else. We then discuss and consider the Carolina and Dave James Street Park projects.
Yeah, so the bid, uh, bid um, document is attached, as is the memo from M S A. How the board, board was concerned about um, the, just the general overall price of the project. So um, M S A, the board has to kind of phase it out. What do we want? So we want included, what they got, and have to put it so. Uh, there was three alternatives that the board could um, pick up. You can pick up one, two, or three, or just do the base bid. Um, up to you. It is M S A's recommendation. Does the board uh, accept the project with the base bid and alternatives two and three? And if you choose to do that, that's um, eighty K under what we had estimated as kind of in our legendary conversations. So a lot, but it is less than what we had hoped, which is good, but still, it's a swimming a chunk of money. Um. So alternative two and three, what we're really cutting out is um, two shelters and um, some electrical and siding in uh, James. So you're cutting out a shelter in Carolina and a shelter in James. Right now, do we? That's what we're really, um, that's the cut. Which we thought maybe in Carolina, that was space was already a little bit too crowded, so it's.
No, I was happy to see that it came in under where we thought it was going to be. I know we're so, we haven't quite acquired.
We are so, what if I were to through the motion, it would be contingent upon closure of the properties. Um, for the agreement, we're closing at the end of the month. So you'd have to approve condition on closing of Carolina.
And when are we looking to start these?
In phase one, could start this fall, um, because it's a lot of just groundwork, infrastructure work, and then both parks would be up hopefully by August.
Wow.
Of next year.
Of next year.
Yeah. It brings, I'll bring up the conversation I had with you earlier today. Yeah, I have no idea what blacktop costs and all that kind of stuff, but when you look at this, uh, I am uh, anyways, the price, oh, second page of the bid, uh, under phase three, trash receptacle, fourteen hundred dollars a piece. And.
Expensive.
Um. The water foams are in here like fifty-four hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah, and we had looked at that too, at the parks, meaning we thought that was something I think we could probably take these out and source those elsewhere, because that's pricey.
Yeah, I mean, I look, and again, I we don't get the specs and you can't, can't get on the quest to look at the specs unless you're a bidder, but the um, I looked at the water fons, similar to the ones that we have in, in Library Park and Community Park, and they were like fifteen hundred dollars. So I don't know if we're getting ripped off because we're government or what, but that is ridiculous.
We did raise that same question in the parks meetings on those two items. I think, I think we're just looking basically for that base price. Like I said, those two items, I don't have a problem taking out. Excuse me, and sourcing elsewhere, because like you said, we've seen them.
Well, so again, I'm purchasing the actual items. I think they need to be installed, so yeah, that's where I would go with it, I think. But uh, because while they're over there installing all that stuff, then we'd have to, do we come into issues with having somebody else coming and installing it, having to get pricing for that, or you know, bids or quotes or whatever for that, so um. But, yeah, I, I think we should look at personally, that's like thirteen thousand dollars for those things. And again, I realize some of that includes installation, but uh, that's absolutely ridiculous.
I agree, yeah, like I said, we have.
If we can pull those to the actual purchase of those two, two water fons and those two trash receptacles out of here, we'll purchase them at our cost and they'll install them. That would be the way I would prefer to go with this, I think.
I agree.
Can we do that? Or is it an as-is?
I think it's an as-is, but you can always prove it, and if not, then maybe that's where we have to bid. Then you may have to redo the process, so push it back another month or so.
For the expenses, probably laterals.
No, all the laterals are listed separately in here, putting those in, so.
For a point of reference, the ones that we're looking at for the depot, which uh, are like water bottle filling stations are in the seven thousand dollar range. So just, just throwing out that some of the newer, you know what I mean, kind of like those big parks department ones really do get expensive. You put those dog bowls down there and it's another like fifteen hundred dollars, just to put a point of reference. Each spout, right, sort of have like a, a drinking spout and then a water bottle filling station and then like a dog bowl at the bottom, and each one of those spouts can be about two thousand. Yeah, I don't think we're looking to go that far. Put my points out there. I'm buying them. Educated person. No.
I would say the same thing, that the library doesn't have any exterior garbage cans yet, and I've been sourcing them, and they're easily seven to eight hundred dollars for just a can.
And the ones that we're looking at has three um, drinking things from the drinking fountain, so it is a nicer.
L K is one of the manufacturers that makes them that a lot of state parks and things like that use because they never break. Yeah, if I remember right, these are stone. It's been a while since we.
I doesn't know what the brand is, but it's just a tall drinking fountain. It has two things off to the side.
Two spots, yeah. Oh, do you want to, does, excuse me, to go back to the parks department?
No, I, I mean, we, you know, I guess based on the conversation we've had here today, um, everything has just gotten outrageously expensive, so I want to get these parks done, so we can get that off of our, check that box, so.
I agree.
Um.
Does it refresh everyone's memory of why we're paying for this? Um, and so, are we talking about Carolina or James? James?
Carolina, do Carolina first.
Okay, uh, for Carolina, so the purchase price is two hundred thousand dollars, uh, hundred thousand for each lot. Um, we have applied for roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grants from both county and the state. Uh, we have advanced in the county process. I don't know where we are in the state process. We should find out about both of them in October. Um, around about that time. We did have the trail in the, the TID three uh, project plan, and this is the trailhead, so there's some funding there. Uh, then also we have the uh, park fund for all the P and L U park land and uh, parking impact, these uh, have been collected, and there's uh, more than enough to pay for the anticipated park impact uh, plan for improvements to Carolina Street. So between everything there, we, we have enough, even if we don't receive the grants, we have enough for the, the acquisition and improvement of Carolina Street. It just obviously, if we get the grants, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'd be nice. Uh, and then for James Street, it's yield, but it's just debt. I mean, we can, if we have anything left over in our, uh, funds, we can, we can use it, but I doubt we will after Carolina Street.
I just got a couple of questions. Would someone please explain to me what the unclassified excavation cost? What is that?
Where are you looking, Judy?
There's a cost in base one.
Oh, I see it.
Thirty thousand of base one, the alternative of one is.
That's just simply the excavation.
That's like excavation, construction engineering context refers to removal of all materials encountered during excavation work, regardless of their nature or method requirement for removal, less explicitly excluded.
Okay. I looked at that, I'm going to look at that. And this base one and the alternative one is one park or both parks?
Um, base bid phase one is one park. Base bid phase two is the same park, and then base bid phase three is uh, Albert or James Street.
And that case four, it's, that's not, yeah. Case four isn't in, yes, there is a case four. Well, isn't this Albert part of the apartments, the duplex?
About the Bakerwood's phase, or Bakerwood's phase three. Too many phases, so she's talking about specifically that section that Bakerwood's face three.
It's in that subdivision.
It is, yeah, the James Park, the Albert Park is in that.
Across from our wellhouse.
Right, yeah.
I thought that was four.
No, four is, you know, it's a lot of, there's two threes and there's two fours, and they're both in that area. Don't, it's, don't, it's.
It's, we know what.
Yeah, we're talking about the same location.
Okay, Tyler, up to Albert, to James.
It's on James and whatever Albert.
Yep, it's Albert and Albert turns into Tyler and I mean, it's enough to make a person go nuts.
Darling.
Uh, and the other thing is I called this, uh, payments. Which is.
Okay.
It's all the capital fund, ten-year all look. And this park happens to be on there. And it says the funding source is going to be the park fund of two hundred and thirty thousand. And the I don't think the other one is even on here.
It's.
Under James. So I'm looking. Two seventy-something? James Street, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two. And that was going to be a general obligation debt. So that was to be funded by that. Is that still?
That's what he.
Is that in just like. Well, hundred and fifty and then parks, but I guess we're not talking about Albert yet.
I mean, Carolina Streets, I, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces there until we know the final disposition of the grant funds. We're not going to know what's the most advantageous for us. I mean, obviously, whatever the most advantageous way is to pay for it, we'll pay for it that way, but I just don't know yet. For James Street, that's not a part of the TID, but the only feasible way to pay for that would have been out of park funds, which were depleted to do Carolina Street or general obligation debt.
Which is in the park fund.
Uh, I want to say it's a little less than three hundred thousand.
Thank you.
So M S A is recommending.
Skipping the phase one, or uh, alternative one, and I'll do an alternatives two and three.
Okay, so.
On top of the base bid.
So we're base phase one, base phase two, is phase three, so all three of those?
All three of those base, those base bids, if you're going to do this project, you have to do those. If you don't want to do those, then we can revisit the project, but that's the base bid. You can't change the base bid. But you can change is the alternatives.
They're recommending an alternative two and three.
Yes. If you don't like the base bids, we can just, oh. Out. Do you have that option? If you do this, as it sits, you have to have those three base bids.
If I understand you correctly, Gavers, we should do base bids one, two, and three.
Yep.
And then the alternative, two and three.
That's what uh.
Is recommended.
Yeah. And like with the basement, that's the infrastructure of the projects, like that's the stuff that you're going to just have to do. The alternatives are, do you want shelters? Do you want this playground? Do you want this? Like the added drinking fountains, the amenities is the alternative. The bases are just, this is the infrastructure classes, how much it moves to cost, move dirt, this is how much the utilities cost, like this, that's a solid number.
So this has been out to bid already?
Yeah, this, so the board chooses if they can approve the bid um, subject to.
So who all bid it?
It was just the one company. Uh, it was Parisi.
Pardon me, who?
Parisi.
Oh, Parisi.
That's kind of too bad, we don't get more responses.
Yeah.
Super busy, kids going to trades.
Yeah. I did.
Exactly, I digress, anyway.
We can't break it up between the specific different skill sets. The trade sets.
What do you mean?
Well, like an excavator, yes.
Separate bid for each one, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I asked.
Then we'd need a project manager.
Yeah.
So that's.
And a granters money. And yes, that's.
Just asking the question.
Yep.
Yeah. I see that question.
Go ahead, Connie.
Why come we always just do this, and we get one bid? Why don't we call companies? Why should we call them?
M S A.
Put it out there for them to bid.
There's a bidding website and.
Website, and they go on there and companies bid on it.
I can say, I know, especially for construction and excavation right now, everybody is.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
And similar to your job.
But I'm just wondering why we don't go on, like when we did the playground stuff down here, I went to a company and.
Like when we did the playground stuff down here, I went to a company and I talked to them and I called another company and talked to them. And got the bids myself. Why can't we do that? Nobody had time.
That's why we had MSA do it, and that's why it's on a website.
Much to have that. I agree with Connie. Paying money.
It costs a lot more money when you're figuring in people's time.
Some of us are retired and we could do it. And then they're going to let their work here at the village all sit on something else.
Yeah.
To have one of them do it. And what do you leave sit?
Have someone with some experience.
Making those calls and getting, asking the same questions and make sure you're getting bid up.
And it will. That's kind of, that whole process is not with this agenda item as well, so.
Yeah, I, I will also say in my, my brief time here so far, I've sought RFPs on two different items. I've reached out to at least a dozen different companies for each of them, and I've received one response for each of them.
Just watch.
And it's not just some of them you can take off the street to do this stuff.
No.
To do the call.
You have to have some.
So, um. Another discussion by the board, um. Any specific? Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a commotion to approve. BB twenty twenty-five dash seventy-four contingent on closing on property on Carolina.
Which, which parts?
Like you want as base, phase one, two, three, and alternative two and three.
Yeah.
For the base bid.
Base bid, alternatives, two and three.
Second. And do we need to specify where the financing comes?
Please God, no. Really be determined if we get grants or.
Yeah, you can.
You determine is perfect, but yeah. I mean, we, we can absolutely, we absolutely have avenues to explore for that, but we don't know yet.
Do a roll call vote.
Uh, President Service.
Yes.
Uh, Trusty Bannon.
Yes.
Long Guard.
Yes.
Michael Kraut.
Yes.
Kazmar.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Speaker.
Yes.
That's on seventy euro.
All right, yes, those two networks.
A long time coming for that West Side development.
Absolutely.
It's parks out there. Business, discuss, consider Badger Trails. Carpecy, Carpecy.
Carpecy is the capital area regional plan.
We had an acronym, how do they say it?
There. There are fun organizations to work with, but it's, uh. Don't have, you don't, we're annexing land into the village and it's part of the process because we're in their service region. Other counties have different service carpsies, um, and so this is their review of utilities, stormwater. So with every annexation that we do, or any major thing like that, carpsies involved. Carpecy is what held up the cold drive development for like eight months because they had stuff. They, every development carpecy goes through, so it's just part of the process. So this is just part of the development process. For Badger Trails, you don't even have to like, like the plat, this is literally just regardless of what the plat looks like, that we have to go through the carpecy process. You can put one house, that whole lot, we start to go through carpecy. So.
We tend to want to extend our sewer.
Yes, urban services.
Yeah.
So this is just a motion to say the village board is annexing this land and we would like for you to read.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second from Gary. All those in favor?
I have a question. Do they provide guys with the list of what they require you to sign up to?
Uh, the engineers handle all of that, so Kevin Lord, our engineer is the main point of contact, but they've been doing this a million times, so they just know what. Has to go and right now they're reviewing it preliminary at this point. And then they provide feedback and then most of that feedback's usually in Kevin's report, in the engineering report for my commission.
Right, thanks.
Next item on our. Discuss considering the MSA task order regarding the WQ, QT plan implementation.
So before, uh, a few goes, because there's two task orders, one is what was attached and the other one came a little bit later today. Um, just forgot to attach it, that's what's.
Serve the general explanation of water quality trading plan, um, or anyone doesn't know. Um, consider it like carbon trading except for phosphorus. We have a wastewater treatment plant which puts phosphorus into the water. The state does not like it. Nobody really likes it. Um, now, there are ways to reduce that. Um, one of those ways is, uh. Technological advancements within the, uh, facility itself to reduce it, those are very, very expensive to do. So the state has created this sort of marketplace where we can essentially get phosphorus credits. Um, by helping, by helping local landowners do shoreline improvements. Plant different crops that, that aren't so, um, that don't generate so much phosphorus with the fertilization and. So we are of course engaged in this, um, water quality trading program, um, helping landowners do these improvements. To mitigate the phosphorus that we're releasing into the water through our plant. Um, someone of course has to monitor this and, um. Do the testing to make sure that we are generating the credits that we need to generate. Um, so this is MSA doing this and this, this is for the plan we have currently implemented. This first project number, the, the one you have in front of you, the hard copy one, that ends in one, one, two, one. This is for this year's plan. Uh, thirteen, thirteen thousand three hundred dollars and the meat of it, what the scope of it is on the last piece of paper. Um, inducting site inspections for our three landowners that we're dealing with. Um, quantifying the phosphorus credits that we're utilizing, um, within the treatment facility. Um, submitting the reports to the DNR. And, uh, creating their annual inspection reports and providing us guidance for the incentive payment recommendations that, uh, or the. Providing guidance for us for the incentive payment recommendation letters, uh, we have to pay the landowners to participate in this. And that is pretty much it, making sure that the plan that we are engaged in, the. The water quality trading plan is going as planned. This is all of course required by the state, yes.
It was my understanding that those contracts were negotiated. A number of years ago. And I, I didn't bring my file or I could tell you. And it's for a ten year period. And they got so much money already. We wrote checks to those three landowners, at least twice, if not three times.
Until the program's done, I'm pretty sure we just keep writing checks.
Yeah.
Right.
But those would be the same amount over the ten year period, was my understanding. And at that ten year period. This governing body renewed it for another ten or renegotiate their contracts. Is my understanding, is that correct? So that we would already know how much we're paying the three lenders.
What's that got to do with this?
Yeah.
Task order.
But I have no idea what that task order says. About my copy? I would love your copy.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, oh, well, twenty, the MSA task order for the developed twenty twenty-five. If you keep planning the implementation for an amount that could see thirteen thousand. Second.
Next agenda.
Now. Section on this.
I think you meant, did you say fifteen or thirteen?
It's a thirteen.
Thirteen thousand three hundred. That's the one, the paper cap we got tonight.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I'm just trying to. One is facility planning and the other.
So there's two water quality trade.
Right.
One's that's on the agenda this week later today.
One that was attached to the.
Yeah.
So the one that's attached is the first agenda item. That's twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
We're not talking about that, we're talking about.
Okay, well, I was.
It's the same, it's water.
I know, I know, they're the same thing, they're just different timeframes. It's really not a big deal. Yes. So. According that task order. Motion by Gary. Is the second.
Michelle.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Passes.
The second one, um, ending one, two, two. Um, we had a, a five year plan, uh, going from like twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, this would be the next five years. Next five year plan for the water quality training, trading. This would also be done in conjunction with our facility study, which is the next item, because a lot of the. A lot of the information that needs to be gathered and analyzed for this plan will also have to be done for the facility study, uh, so they'll be done. What's the word? Heard several suggestions there, but they'll be done in tandem.
And our, it's also for WPDS.
Yes, it is. Um, so, yeah, this would include our historic analysis for the treatment facility. Low and loading projection updates, updating our credits that we'll be generating, um, apping updates for. The projects that have already been implemented during the previous term and update the report with the information, uh. Yes, updating all our reports and corresponds with the DNR during the review process and getting it approved. So this would be our next five year plan for the, for water policy. Should be twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
In this.
Compliance.
This deliverable will be delivered by August twenty, twenty-six, is that correct?
Oh, that is correct, starting in January, completed in August.
I'm moving to approve the MSA task order for the VELW WPD plan update. Twenty twenty-six and the amount not exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. I'm going to give it the dub.
Go ahead, Jim.
Do you know approximately, uh, the top of your head, how many credits we're going to get and will repeat it? Oh, great.
Yeah, who can give an update from twenty twenty-four? You used seventy-four point four pounds credits, um. Yeah, that was from the treatment plant, so that was the number of credits you used and. You generated just under two hundred credits with all projects. And what they're doing that way, so you're about thirty-eight percent of your capacity for phosphorus credits.
So, I mean, you're going to have to explain is that. Under, and we have to generate more credits to get us through this year? Or do we start from scratch?
So you keep generating about that two hundred every year, granted that the projects keep up and they're maintained, so that's the important part of these inspections that. Done twice annually. So that's every year you keep generating that, and then that number that you use of treatment plan is going to fluctuate with flows and loads and how much you're treating. For phosphorus that way, so that's the more variable part. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, there's. What I see here, don't think it paid, but. Does. They generate credits for us?
Yeah, they're all part of the project, that's why they generate credits, so.
Right, but you know, he is a, you know, paid for his property, that's why I asked. All right, great.
So. Right, any discussion from the board? Anyone? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? And passes. Right. Works for boards, commissions, committees, no.
Wait, water. All right, Mike, we did two motions in one item.
Your B.
And I think that's.
That's, I guess. Right. And C.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, MSA task order regarding wastewater facility planning.
Okay, here's the big one, um, it is time for us to be. Looking at where our wastewater treatment plant goes from here with the age of the plants and all of our growth, we need to look at where we're going. What we're going to need, uh, that is a. That's all, that's a, that's a heavy haul, that's a, that's a deep dive on this one. So this is to approve MSA to do that study, seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, they will be evaluating both the wastewater treatment plant and our lift stations, making sure we have the, the capacity that we need with future growth. They'll be looking at our inventory of, um, machinery and, and works within the system. Timelines for replacements, um, they'll also be looking at. Some different options we have for, for, um, treatment of, of our effluent that we are not using right now, like ultraviolet treatment. Um, as well as a couple of different options for what we do with our solid waste that we generate, whether we continue hauling it to Madison or, or do something else. This is the big comprehensive study that's basically there to answer all of our questions about what needs to happen with this plant for the next. I think twenty, twenty-five years. It, it's a big haul, but it's the time the plant's getting older and we're growing like crazy, so this kind of has to happen.
Where's this money going to come from?
Capital budget. It's in the most thing you just approved already.
Or how much?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the MSA task order for the Bella wastewater facilities plan twenty twenty-six and an amount. Not to exceed seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
So project development data assets. It's just to be completed by December twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir.
In conjunction with the trading plan.
I have a question. Is this all to be done in one year or is this done in phases?
Um, the, the last two things that we talked about are all done next year, the, uh.
Well, yeah, but I'm trying.
Plan is done for next year, the. The buildings aren't going to have, we have to determine if we're going to build and what's going to happen with that, that's long down the road.
Okay, that's. Okay, that's part of my question. But when we decide to build. My understanding way back when was we could add to the existing plant and not have to build a brand new plant.
That's what we're going to determine.
That's the plan? Okay, thanks. That's what I wanted to know.
This, this determines that along with water quality trading. And what departments are going to be helped, you know, what is the anticipated flows based on our growth? And, you know, whatever load that's going to place, place on the entire system. And probably take into account new technologies and things that have happened since the original plant was put in.
And I would believe that.
So, and then we get the big bill of this is what you need to change.
Is it tactic all be done at one time?
That'll be in there to be, but it'll have to be determined.
Okay, any discussion from the board?
Is this just a one year study? Am I correct?
It's a one year study for the next 20 years.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say it again.
It's a 20 year worth study.
Oh, I see. Okay. Is it also looking at when we might need a second water tower?
Uh, this, so that's the water system study that we are, they have, they fully haven't finished yet. They're just wrapping up. Um, we have the draft now that I saw for you. Um, so that's water system study, which we're doing now. This is wastewater. So like if we need more lift stations or that kind of stuff.
Right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Passes. All right. Thank you. Next, reports. Economic development and tourism.
This is the staff group meeting. Um, so that's the one that the economic development committee is kind of going to the inform development group. Uh, there was a post out on Facebook. There's the poster that's out here that we're spreading around to our neighboring businesses. Uh. The listening session, I think, is September 11th by 30 to 7:30. I recommend everybody going to that. That way you can kind of give input. On development and where we want to be, which will tie into the strategic plan, which also do. Create time, just it'll tie into our conference plan, what we're doing. It'll also give you good insight on what people are thinking when we're talking about the tidling out here. Like, it'll be a good, it ties in almost everything that we're doing. So, uh, kind of just.
And public works, properties, utilities.
Couple of things, um. We talked about the, we changed the DDEC meter policy, right? Currently if house sells. Um. We would go take the DDEC meter out and then somebody, if they wanted it back in, they would have to pay a $250 fee. And plumber to get it back in. We. Made no sense to take it out. We just can, it doesn't. It disconnected. They don't use it unless they use a $25 fee. That what we decided or $50 fee now, $25 fee.
All of those 25 or 50 off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's 25. So.
It's an administration thing.
The new owner, if they want to use that, they'll just pay a $25 fee and that meter will start running again. Otherwise they will not. Uh, be built through their DDEC meter at that point. So that was the. Main thing. We reviewed a bunch of ordinances. Uh, we reviewed the, uh, um. Draft. Facilities studies for public works in village hall. Um. We have to come back at the next meeting. Made a lot of suggestions. We're talking about a lot of different things and they're going to look it over and come back with a new draft of that. In the future, another public works meeting, so. For future public work.
Gary, with that DDEC meter. The original purchaser, homeowner purchaser, did they get any rebate when they leave?
Nope. Again, the main thing was this was that it made no sense to go in and take it out and then. You know, I'm buying the house sales and they want it back in.
And I wondered about that when I got my deduct.
Yeah.
Like, can I take it out?
Yeah, so this, so it'll be turned off. When, when the house or when the property, when they leave, it'll be turned off and the house sells for $25 fee if the new homeowner wants to. Use the DDEC meter, they'll pay the $25 fee and the meter will be turned back on at that point.
And by turning them off, you just mean the, the tracking of it.
The track.
Building of it.
Otherwise.
It was all just like flipping a switch.
If they don't want it, drag a little bit of meter. Any water out of their, their outside hoses will be on regular, right? Not on the DDEC meter. So.
It all runs through the first meter.
Yep.
Okay, uh. Any news and announcements?
And tell me again, where's our meeting, the next, next board meeting?
Coordinating will need to be at the library because it's August. In August, so the August meeting in two weeks will be at the library in the committee room because we'll be holding an election in here the next morning. Um, and then. September, if we're lucky.
Hopefully over on the 130 South Vine if it's up yet. Public Works took the wall, one of the walls out.
Maybe I re-packed my jacket just in case.
And we are putting you under the air conduct.
Oh, yeah.
I looked at the new plan of the building. That's where I'm putting it.
Look at your fan.
Bring my heater, maybe an ice pack.
It's next weekend, VCP?
This week.
Weekend. Or this weekend, I guess. Yeah, well, when we look at next weekend, coming up. I'm going to be at the car show.
There you go. So.
Did you order your pie from the senior center?
Missed that. I, I don't eat pie often.
You buy it for us?
Say, share it.
It's, I suppose I should, I should make a small announcement, not that it's, yeah, whatever. Um, normally we do, um, chipping. You know, first Monday and Tuesday, well, mostly Monday and Tuesday, first Monday and Tuesday and then third of the month. Uh, we are so busy with all the. The festivals, all, all the stuff we've got going on. We are having to delay this one until next Tuesday. So.
So.
It's a small thing, but, um.
I'll have it two weeks in a row then.
We will have it two weeks in a row, but it's, there's just no way around it. There's just got to prioritize what we're doing and. We got to take care of our summer stuff going on first.
You talked about having it online where you fill out a form if they need stuff picked up. So you're not running around the village. Where are we at with that?
I, I spoke to my guys about that and the logistics involved. Um, it ended up. I think we've just gone around the circle before and we end up where we start in that, that they've got a route that they run. And it's just the most efficient way to do it is just to run the route and, and hit everything they see.
I have one question for our library director. The garbage cans you looked at for the library and you're talking outside garbage cans, right? Are they like the ones that are sitting on Main Street?
No, but we have plans to, I like.
Similar.
Well, yes, or they, I think they have some plans to replace some of theirs and so. We'll get the same ones. Or vice versa, Benny, who vice first?
Okay, because I've been asking to have additional. Trash cans since we've got restaurants and everybody on Main Street.
Those were, uh, being held off until the, uh, resurfacing of the highway and.
Yeah.
All the bump outs were put in and, and all that.
In other words, I still have to clean up garbage. Tell that. How about moving the one that's by the empty pill shop in Dance video? It's very seldom gets used. And move it down the street. In between Johnny or off guard?
If you want to take this stuff to me, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to my guys and it just get with me at some point. If we can, if it, if it's a good idea, I think it's a good idea. See.
Okay, uh, moving on, closed session. The Village Bellville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin. Oh, sorry.
Can I ask you a question about that before you get into?
Yes.
Hey, where is Park Meadows Development Center?
That's across from me. We do not face all property. By Sugar River Park across.
Oh. Another morning. The Village Depot property, how come we're in closed session again?
There's some contract stuff that they have, they were asking the village board to look at. But they'll make their motion in open session.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for answering that.
Okay, the Village of Bellville Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19 that 85 subsection 1 subsection C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village will reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed sessions. It's a sadist to discuss, the village administrators, evaluation. And the Village of Bellville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 19 that 85 subsection 1 subsection D. For the purposes of delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene into open session. And take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. And items to be discussed will establish a negotiating position regarding the Village Depot property. Establish a negotiation position regarding the Park Meadows development and establish a negotiating. Negotiation position regarding the Bell West lot 24.
I mean.
Second.
Under closed session.
Second.
Second by Max E.
Uh, President Service.
Yes.
Aiden.
Yes.
Ongard, Michael Kraut.
Yes.
Asmar.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Peekler. Zero, you're presented Pat 701.
You want to turn off that camera?
And the microphone.
They don't trust me for that.
Boom.
...
Fifty one.
All right, so I know we're in open session. Whatever the motion was, the parent said before I'll make that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
So there was the
So
Discussion in closed session regarding negotiating positions.
All right. That's not a space to give you on the paper. As negotiation. Positions. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And passed.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Didn't hurt.
We have to make motion.
You have to.
I was gonna say.
That's just, that'll be included in the budget, so.
So that's backwards from what you told.
No, you can, you can do either. Up to you guys.
Can we just do that? Look, it's part of the bui- I mean.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why.
Okay.
Fine. Do it as part of the budget then, I guess.
Okay, can I make motion to adjourn?
You may.
I can.
By Debbie, second and by Maxine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Periods. Page zero.
And it's Friday.
Don't get ready for anything. We want to guarantee yourself a chicken dinner. Get online and order.